Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our September 1st meeting to order and welcome everyone back from summer vacation to the audience and to my fellow council members because we have a little bit of summer left, so we'll continue to enjoy that. This is the closest meeting that we have to 9/11 and it is the city's tradition to commemorate 9/11 and that's what we'd like to do this evening. September 11th, 2001 was a day that will be remembered for the devastation that this country suffered and the tragedy that affected so many. Our nation was attacked by acts of terrorism and unfortunately killed thousands of innocent men and women. And as we all know, there were many heroes that day. Some of those who brought special pride to the country were the New York Fire Department and the Police Department personnel. Their actions brought home to all of us the importance of our safety personnel and their commitment to protecting our homes and families. So as a tribute to these brave men and women, we are proud to introduce our community's Fire Department and Police Department Honor Guard. Gentlemen, if you would march in, please. Can I have everyone stand, please, and we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have your hands over your hearts? Begin. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to testify that we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice So annually, we recognize the devastating events of September 11th, 2001, and we want to honor those who experienced the tragedy. And this moment of recognition allows us to express our admiration and respect for the innocent victims and their families and, of course, the gallant responders that were on the scene first. So I ask that our audience and the viewers bow their heads for a moment of silence to remember those lost on September 11th, 2001. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would also like to express our gratitude to all our safety personnel here in Thousand Oaks, our local police and our fire departments. They do an exceptional job of keeping our city safe, keeping our families safe, and please know that we keep you in our prayers for your safety and that is paramount to us. So I want to thank you all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, if the city clerk would please give us the roll call.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
I'm here. I don't believe there's any requests for continuances that I'm aware of, so I am going to go down to the podium and make some presentations. Well, this evening, we have three presentations to make and they all honor the youth of our community, which I'm particularly proud to be able to do. The first has to do with the Special Olympics. We were a host town here in Thousand Oaks and I do want to just take a moment and commend our mayor, Pro Tem Joel Price, for being the spearhead of our host town endeavors here in Thousand Oaks. It was beautifully done and we appreciate it. Joel, thank you very much. Yeah, let's hear it. The Special Olympics ran in Los Angeles from July 25th to August 2nd. 6,500 athletes participated, 165 countries were represented, and tonight, we have very special guests with us, our single and sole representative from Ventura County. I'd like to ask Eric Fido to come and join me at the podium. And Mr. and Mrs. Fido, would you like to come up as well? Come on up. Yeah, there you go. Eric's a bowler and he participated in the bowling division, men's single and American team. Eric had a silver medal in the team category and a bronze in the men's singles. And he's got them with us tonight. Look at this. Wow, how about that? Oh, great. Wow, that's very impressive. Eric's been bowling for 11 years and has won 19 regional Special Olympics medals in the sport. And this was the first time he competed in the Special Olympic World Games. So how was it bowling for the Special Olympics?
It was good.
Good? Yeah, I guess so. You did pretty good. I want to thank you for representing Thousand Oaks in the Special Olympics, Eric, I really do. And I want to present you with a proclamation that commemorates your achievement and we have a pin from the city and we have a medallion from the Special Olympics World Games we'd like to give to you. So thank you very, very much for doing such a good job. Why don't we ask the council to come down and we'll all get a picture. All right? Alrighty, for our next presentation, we have an accomplished group of athletes with us tonight, young men from the Canejo Valley District 13 Big League Team. Can I have Scott Clark, their manager, join me up here at the podium? The team won the 2015 Southern California State Championship, the Western Regional Championship, and the 2015 Big League World Series United States Championship in Easley, South Carolina. He went all the way to South Carolina, huh? Alright. They had an impressive 13-2 record before they headed into the World Championship game against Puerto Rico. They made three appearances in three years, very consistent, in South Carolina for the Big League World Series. They showed a lot of character representing the city of Thousand Oaks and it was a very impressive accomplishment. Dedicated, team had good chemistry, committed, and good sportsman. So, and in fact, can we have coaches John Terosian and Kyle Jones come on down as well? And is the president here too, Lee Mahana? Oh, there's Lee. Yeah, come on down. And Coach, why don't you call the players up and introduce them and tell us what position they played?
I will, I will.
And a little bit about the team too.
I will, thank you. Thank you. I want to thank the city council for having us here. We really, really appreciate it. It's really quite an honor. Thanks to Antonette for putting this together and thanks to our law enforcement and our fire servicemen for their service to the community. Appreciate that. Alright, so let me go ahead and call up some of our players. I want you guys to know that we have 17 members of the Big League United States Championship Team. 10 of them are now away at college doing what 19-year-olds supposed to do, go to school and further their education. Some of them are continuing to play ball, so unfortunately, we just have a few, but they're special and we're going to get them up here. First of all is our catcher, Ben Martz. Next is our first baseman, John Glenn. Next, our pitcher, infielder Riley Jones. And our pitcher and my son, Brooks Clark. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce a couple of the members in the audience.
By all means.
We have our Big League and new district administrator for District 13. Our program can't survive without the support of many, many people. Roger Lazar's been a huge, huge piece of the equation for almost two decades with respect to the baseball community and specifically Big League. So Roger, we thank you again and I'll introduce the other. My assistant coach Kyle brought his girlfriend Alec with us. We appreciate that. Alec, good to see you. And Riley Jones has got his mother and his father Leslie and Eric Jones here. Coach Jones was part of the 2006 World Championship Team almost a decade ago, so it's been a family affair. We're glad to have him. We also have Kerry Martz and the Martz grandparents that are here. Thank you so much for coming. And last but certainly not least, my beautiful wife Angela, who obviously has been supporting us for a while, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
I have a commendation for you that commemorates your achievements. And great job with the kids.
Thank you.
The kids. Young men, I should say. And, you know, to Roger Lazar, who's been involved in baseball here in the Canejo Valley for 40 years maybe or more. I mean, you've really done a lot for kids. 42 years. 42 years. Really done a lot for kids and young adults here in the Canejo Valley, so thank you for your contributions. Why don't we go up and get a picture?
Super.
What do you say? Thanks, fellas. That's great. Oh, and by the way, I think the team is going to be working with Cabrillo Music Theater, if I'm not mistaken, to help promote their play Damn Yankees. And I believe there's a game coming up, is it September 19th?
September 19th.
September 19th, so we'll get more information out to you. Come on out and watch them play. Alright, and for our final presentation, we have a group of 5th grade elementary kids from Lang Ranch Elementary. These kids are gifted children who were one of 800 teams that competed in the 36 Odyssey of the Mind World Finals in May of 2015. The competition emphasizes creativity and teamwork and their team was called the Secret Spies. And they advanced through the regional and state competition and placed 19th in the division at the World's Finals. So Michelle Lauterman, would you mind coming down? Are you here tonight? No? Okay. Or maybe we could have Angela Wu and Young Wu come on down? We have some smart kids here tonight, let me tell you. Is it Angela?
Uh, no. This is Angela.
Oh, hi Angela. Nice to see you. Well, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I want to, in fact, we're going to have all the kids come down for a picture, but I want to present you with a commendation. Oh, we have one for... Okay. Well, you know what? Are these for the kids as well? Okay. Well, you know what? Yeah, let's see. Here. And Young. Shall we have the kids come down? Why don't the kids come on down as well? And I want to present these commendations to you.
Cherie Chua.
Cherie?
Cherie.
Cherie? There you are. Very good.
Um, Yumankin.
Yumankin. There we are. Connor LeValle. Oh, there he is. Hello, Connor. Emerson's up. There he is, Emerson.
Um, B.
Megan Wang. Here we are.
Joshua.
Joshua.
Mary Ann.
There we are. Very good, kids. Good job, guys. So are you in 5th grade right now?
6th.
Oh, 6th. Oh, that's right. They're already in 6th grade. Wow. Middle school pretty soon, huh? Ah. Hey, let's go up and get a picture with the rest of the council. What do you think? Alright. Always great to honor the youth of the Canejo Valley. Now, we are going to move on to public comments. If you would announce that, please. Ms. Lawrence?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. 10 people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I'm going to call your name and if, I'm going to call two names and if you would, the second person come down to the on-deck circle here, we can move right along, please. And as the city clerk said, please state your name and city of residence. First up, our city manager, Scott Midnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? I'm technically a resident. I could speak. No. I'm actually going to introduce our new library services director, Heather Cousin, if she can come up. A little bit of background about Heather. She survived an extensive nationwide recruitment and selection process. We're proud that after an extensive review, we actually hired somebody who lives here in the city of Thousand Oaks. So Heather has extensive experience in the library world, working for libraries such as Arcadia Riverside, Rancho Cucamonga, Moore Park, and most recently, Simi Valley. She's got a lot of awards and achievements and that's stuff the council's already seen. Her background in terms of education, a Bachelor of Arts degree from UC Riverside, a teaching credential from UCLA, and a Master of Library and Information Science from San Jose State University. So a great addition to the city. Our executive team will take our library to the next level, building upon an incredible foundation that's been built over several decades. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Heather and say, "Welcome."
Thank you. And I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here, not just to be here tonight, but to be part of the Thousand Oaks Team. I've lived here now for seven years and been continually impressed by how wonderful this city is and especially our library. And I think we have some great things in store for us and I'm really looking forward to getting in there and getting started. So thank you again for having me here tonight and let's get to work. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Heather. Welcome to our family.
Yeah, I just want to ask maybe the city manager, just not so much for you, Heather, but I noticed you came from Simi Valley.
Correct.
So our city attorney came from Simi Valley, so we probably need to put some kind of surveillance on the administrator from Simi Valley because they're probably not very happy with all their good employees coming over here to Thousand Oaks, so...
That could be.
Chief Hagle will be all over that. Yeah.
Good idea.
Welcome. We're very pleased to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Fox. Alright, let us go now to Beth Miller Horwitz, followed by Peter V. Elliott.
Good evening. It's actually Beth Willer Horwitz.
Willer, yes it is. Thank you.
It's okay, just slip the first letter. Okay, I'm a concerned resident and taxpayer here in Westlake Village who utilizes Triumphal Park on a regular basis. And I'm very concerned about the Roundup spraying that's been being done throughout Triumphal Park and especially the area around the restrooms, which is a high-use area by homeschoolers and the general public, which was blanketed with Roundup by men in hazmat suits in order to kill the grass fast to participate in the exchange of cash for turf program. There was no permanent signage warning people that that day who were utilizing the park that the area had been sprayed with a toxic chemical. That means that children, pets, and wildlife utilize the area shortly after the spraying and continually since the spraying. Though this area, according to Tom Hare of the CRPD, was sprayed in error and will be fixed, there has been no permanent signage warning people about the Roundup spraying in that area or throughout the park. How and when will the area, which was sprayed in error with a toxic chemical, be fixed? It's a high-use area. It continues to be used by children and the general public, pets and wildlife, without the knowledge that it was sprayed with a toxic chemical. It's been stated that Roundup is an environmental hazard and according to a World Health Organization agency, as having a probability of causing cancer. As a result, Las Robles Golf Course stopped using it and the CRPD stopped using it in certain parks, but continues to use it in Triumphal Park, a park that is heavily used by children and the general public. My concern is what will the environmental impact be when the rains come and there is water runoff? What harm will there be to the water table, the lake, wildlife, children, pets, et cetera? Was an environmental study done prior to the spraying throughout Triumphal Park and if so, what were the findings? Rather than jumping on a short-sighted fix to exchange cash for turf, which can bring about additional problems, a long-term environmental impact study and its effects needs to be done so that the correct solution can be achieved instead of making mistakes that can and will prove costly in more ways than one. CRPD should be reaching out to the Las Robles Golf Course to discuss alternative methods of turf removal like sod cutters or other mechanical and manual means to remove turf. Better yet, let nature take its course and let the turf just die naturally. I'm very concerned about what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Peter V. Elliott, followed by Yvonne Brockwell.
Hi, my name is Peter Elliott and I live at 2124 Linden Grove Street, Westlake Village, 91361. I represent a number of concerned citizens. I'm in line with Beth. I have a number of people over there in the corner. Wave your hands, say hi. We use the park, Triumphal Canyon Park, consistently and we have noticed the indiscriminate spraying of Roundup. I don't know what the city's council's Roundup strategy is, but it clearly is not working. I think you should go back into talking to all your thoughts about Las Robles Golf Course and revisiting that decision. I think that was a good decision. I'm sure everyone here on the council is very concerned. That's why you rendered your decision. At Triumphal Canyon, Triumphal Park, there are no signs where it has been sprayed. You can see where children have been playing. There are actually groups that meet out there. If you're going to do this kind of thing, post your signage. If you understand the impact of Roundup, that's fine. Where's the environmental impact study on the use of Roundup? The area that I'm concerned about also is a mixed use of that park for senior citizens, people walking their dogs. It just is not right, the way it is being done. So what is the plan? Publish your plan. Make sure people understand the plan. Clarity is king. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Yvonne Brockwell, followed by Catherine Goodspeed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yvonne Brockwell and I live in Westlake Village. I'm entirely in support of reviewing any environmental impact of using glyphosate in multiple broad-scale applications in our parks that are adjacent to our protected open spaces and more importantly, in parks that drain into feeder streams in the Malibu Creek watershed. The intermittent stream that runs through and below Triumphal Community Park has been channelized so that runoff and rainwater converge at Petrao Creek and into Westlake Lake. South Shore Hills Park also drains into Petrao Creek and into Westlake Lake. There is a stream under South Shore Hills Park. I know this stream well and I used to play in it when I was a child. It is part of the reason why the park becomes a giant sponge when we do have rain. So how will multiple broad-scale applications of glyphosate and surfactants affect the biota of Westlake Lake and in turn, the Malibu Creek watershed? Surfactants found in glyphosate mixtures, especially P O E A, are harmful to aquatic life and embryonic development. Beyond what CRPD uses on a weekly basis for spot weed removal, we are also seeing large swathes of these parks and others throughout the Canejo Valley being sprayed with these herbicidal mixtures. What is of additional concern is that in CRPD's accelerated movement on the turf rollback projects, there have been errors, large errors, as well as the need to repeat application of herbicide. We are concerned that this has created an unusually heavy load of glyphosate and surfactants waiting to be washed into our watershed. Another faulty part of the equation is the use of wood chips to suppress weeds. In Triumphal Community Park, we have been watching piles of debris from various species of trees being stacked and stored in the park for over a year. These piles contain seeds from highly invasive species which we have already seen sprouting in the park. These wood chips have not... These wood chips have not been cut to a recommended size of one inch or smaller, and the piles of debris have not been solarized to prevent the germination of seeds from invasive species. In these debris piles, there are remnants of blue gum acacia and pepper trees, tree of heaven and palms are already sprouting through the chips, in a park which is adjacent to protected open space. How are these invasive species currently being removed? Additional applications of glyphosate. Are we setting ourselves up for a larger problem? When the rains come this winter, we are concerned that we will have managed to seed a forest of some of the most aggressive invasive species in the area. Additionally, these wood chips are sourced locally, though I have not been able to get a definitive answer as to whether or not the contractor who puts them in the parks has also made the effort to sequester diseased or infested tree materials before running them through the chipper. In addition to spreading invasive species through our parks, could we also be spreading other pests, diseases, and pathogens? Also, size matters, these wood chips are too large to suppress weeds, they could become home to termites and other pests, and they also pose a tripping hazard. We will be in attendance this Thursday at CRPD's Board of Directors meeting at 7:30 across from the Oaks Mall. We hope that other residents, voters, taxpayers, and council members who share these concerns will join us in seeking answers as to how these problems may be remedied.
Thank you, Yvonne.
I believe that everyone in this room has at least one child in their lives who they care about and whose future they would protect. Let's start here, we need to be more careful about what we leave behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Goodspeed, followed by Jim Wolfe.
My name is Catherine Goodspeed, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I want to call your attention to the article in the Ventura County Star this morning by Tom Kiskin, "Seniors Barely Get By," done by a research group from UCLA.
Pull the mic down to, there you go.
Okay, better?
That's better.
Senior Alliance for Empowerment, SAFE, has been addressing this very issue for several years. SAFE is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) California corporation, corporation in good standing, which advocates for elderly who are of low income, including many disabled. SAFE's mission includes providing information on elder abuse, informing and assisting seniors on finding available services, and helping to attain funds for improving health and safety issues in their home. The state housing and community development department has begun an inspection program for mobile homes in Thousand Oaks. There are many safety issues to be addressed, especially since the inspection has not been done in over 15 years. SAFE is seeking funding to address the needs of all qualified, low-income elderly in Thousand Oaks who may be struggling to comply with any violations the HCD has found. It might be money for permits, electrical work, materials, and labor. We have tried to access CTBG funding. SAFE partnered with Habitat for Humanity and the Home Depot Foundation. This project helps residents who are veterans or veteran spouses in acquiring everything, from acquiring furnaces to landscaping. We know there are elderly residents throughout the community that also need support. We appreciate the Star making this research a public concern. It is, however, not just the hidden poor surviving by going without. There are many aged who choose to live independently, without public assistance of any kind in the community, who are first, forced to choose between medicine, groceries, and rent. SAFE has already formulated a basis for a subsidy program, and which would allow residents to live their remaining years without such worry about survival. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kathy. Jim Wolfe, followed by Valerie Hopkins.
My name is Jim Wolfe, and I'm a resident of South, Thousand Oaks, and I want to join everybody in the grateful expression of gratitude here for the police and fire in this community, it's fantastic. The last meeting, we had spoke a little bit about some of the deals that involved the Ranch Mobile Home Park, and just how the sausage was made, and we re-understand that there are actually four member of council that were not involved in it at that time. We proceeded to try very hard, without any obligation to the city whatsoever, to get a fair settlement that was at least some relationship to what other parks in the city received. And the response from the city was to hire outside attorneys, which so far, they have exceeded, I'm sure, a half a million dollars in fees. So, tonight, we're going to present some, other speakers will present some readings from the deposition of Mr. Boyd Hill, which was taken by the city's hired attorneys, and they will be done by other residents here. So, I want to thank you very much for your attention, we provided the, we provided the cuts out here, we like, obviously, it's a huge deposition, some of it is restricted, so we aren't using that, and some of it is redundant as well, so we, it had to be selective because it was so large, but we would encourage you, all of the council members, to read the entire deposition. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. Valerie Hopkins, followed by Audrey Phelogia.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Hopkins, I'm a Thousand Oaks resident, and I'm going to read some information to you, as Jim Wolfe stated. So, to begin with, the city attorney. After your phone call with the ranch, and he's talking to Mr. Hill here, did you convey ranch's position regarding the deal points to the rest of the group who were discussing these deal points? No. Was there any discussion about the ranch's position regarding these deal points, aside from your privileged conversation with the ranch representative? Yes. Who did you have that discussion with? Directly with Mayor Fox and Chris Norman. Mayor Fox and Chris Norman, the Assistant City Attorney. Was it just the three of you talking? Yes. Was anybody else near enough to overhear? I doubt it. Do you recall at about what point in the last group meeting this discussion happened? It was following the group meeting, had everyone else left? I don't recall, I seem to remember they were waiting on the result of my discussion. And to the best of your recollection, what were the contents of the discussion with Mayor Fox and Mr. Norman? Well, there were two discussions. Let's start with the first. The first was Mayor Fox asking if my client would be interested in joining the deal points, meaning the ranch owner, I think it's A V M G H, whatever, I believe it's five, five. Was it just the two of you talking, or was Mr. Norman present for the first one? Mr. Norman was present. Okay, and do you remember, I know this is several years ago now, but do you remember exactly what he asked? He asked if my client would agree to the deal points, and he said, "This is better than the rent increase that had been granted to the ranch by the city, because the city would defend any challenge to the ordinance and to any challenge to the ranch, to the ranch rent increase." Were those his exact words? I'm having a hard time distinguishing between the mayor and Chris, but I believe both of them were in accord on emphasizing and selling that to me, that my client, as to reason why my client should participate in the deal points. Do you remember either of them saying anything else during this conversation? No, that was the key point of discussion, was, you know, why would my client want to join in this when he already had his rent increase? So I understand this timeline better, Mayor Fox came to you and said, "Will A V M G H join?" And you said, "Why would my client want to join?" Mr. Fox gave the explanation that you've given me.
Valerie, I, thank you, you have to finish up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I never saw the yellow light.
We're at, we're at the three-minute mark.
Well, this is very good and necessary information for reading, and it is entirely accurate, and I appreciate the time to review it with you all, and I hope that you will finish reading it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audrey Pheloga, did I pronounce it right?
Pheloga.
Okay, and followed by Vic Abranzo.
I hope you don't mind if I sort of sit there.
Not at all.
I'm getting extra trouble with my legs. I am, I am Audrey Pheloga, resident of Thousand Oaks. I will be reading from the Boyd Hill deposition, page 32, beginning line 14. Question, at any point in any of those conversations, did anybody expressly promise that the city would pay your client's fees if they did not have to get involved in litigation? Answer, the city promised that my client wouldn't have to get involved in litigation, and wouldn't have to pay any attorney's fees, period. Question, but nobody ever said, somehow they do get brought in, we will pay your attorney's fees? Answer, it wouldn't have needed to be stated, because the city promised that they would defend the ordinance and defend my client, and that my client wouldn't have to spend any money in litigation, so it was understood that if my client got bought in, that they would, that they would pay. Question, did anybody ever use the word indemnify during any of these conversations? Answer, yeah. Question, who? Answer, the city. Question, who at the city? Answer, will defend and indemnify your client. Question, is that Mr. Fox who said it? Answer, yes. Okay, moving to page 34. I would like to call your attention to the second paragraph in July 12th, excuse me, July 9th, 2012 letter. Answer, uh-huh. Question, the last three lines refer to, quote, "The cities express promise to enact revised rent adjustments." Ordinance and to vigorously defend that ordinance in court, so that the ranch owner would not have to defend its provisions against the court challenge. Did you see that part? Answer, yeah. Question, do you understand that as a promise to identify your client, if your client did not have to get into litigation? Answer, I understood that the mayor, and with Chris Norman there, made that promise at the time, I did not draft this language, and I think I sort of run one little word, a little bit wrong in the upper part, but it still has the same meaning, so please forgive me for doing that. If you want, I could read it over.
It's up to you, you have 40 seconds.
Okay, okay, ordinance and to vigorously defend that ordinance in court, so that the ranch owner would not have to defend its provisions against court challenge. Did you see that part? Yeah. Do you understand that as a promise to identify your client, if your client did have to get into litigation? I understand that the mayor with Chris Norman there made that promise at the time, I didn't draft the language. I believe, I think that that was the part that I had, hopefully, that I had made the mistake, and, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Audrey. Vic Abranzo?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Followed by Barbara Shimon. Hello, Vic.
How are you, sir?
Good, thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I thank you for your time. Rather than going on to read more excerpts from that lovely deposition, I'd merely like to pose two questions and requests. I make both of those requests under the Federal Freedom of Information Act and the California Public Records Act. First request, with respect to the Rampers Sand litigation, if the city's accountants have determined what the exposure or liability is from that litigation for audit purposes, can that information be revealed? If so, I would like a copy. Electronic is fine, I don't want to impose any out-of-pocket costs on the city. Number two, with respect to the development permit for the Ranch Mobile Home Park, your private counsel would have had the court believe that you were disinclined to record the CCNRs that would have granted that park as being for low-income and superannuated citizens into perpetuity. For some reason, it is clear that recording has never been done. If there is any record of the city that indicates why it was not done, I would like to know, and I'm sure my brethren would like to know. Lastly, and with the minute I have left, thank you for the 2011 ceremony. I used to be an appointee of Attorney General William Meese, and actually traveled through that Trade Center daily. Luckily, I was out here before it fell to the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Barbara Shimon, and Barbara is followed by Nick Kidway.
Barbara Shimon, Thousand Oaks resident, Mayor Adam, city council members and city staff. I would like to speak to the council regarding some recent inconsistent financial decisions. On one hand, the city seems to be making good financial decisions, yet at other times, the city seems to be on a reckless spending spree with precious taxpayer dollars. For example, the city supported the Special Olympics by being a host city, that's a good thing. Yet on the other hand, a special needs employee lost her position at the library, the city manager reported, quote, "The operational needs of the library have shifted," unquote. Sadly, the employee lost her position. The city supports bringing businesses to the Thousand Oaks area, and that's a good thing. However, the recent decision to spend millions of dollars for a parking lot in the auto mall is beyond comprehension. The city supports low-income housing, and that's a good thing. They've supported a number of many mansions projects with funding. In fact, a few years ago, the city loaned Many Mansions $500,000 for a senior housing project. When the neighborhood vehemently objected to a zoning change, the project was abandoned, and the city forgave almost $300,000 in funds that were spent. A number of people spoke at the last city council meeting regarding the Ranch Mobile Home Park lawsuit. When Mayor Adam asked the city manager to comment, his response was, quote, "Again, as a reminder, the Mobile Home Park did file a lawsuit against the city, and the city has been going through the process, and the city council has been brought up to speed, and the direction provided through a series of closed-session meetings, and will continue through that process," end quote. I question if the city council has really been provided all of the facts. The city manager did not mention the history of how the lawsuit came to be, these are not litigious people. He did not mention how the Mobile Home Park residents have asked the city over and over to come to the table and discuss a fair rental increase. He did not mention how many of the residents are extremely low-income, nor did he mention how many are disabled and quite elderly. He did not mention that what he earns in a matter of hours, these residents have to live on for an entire month. And he certainly didn't mention that the city has spent over $500,000 of precious tax dollars on the Ranch Mobile Home Park lawsuit. These are not litigious people, as the city manager may want the council to believe, they're decent people who survive on a very limited income, they just want the city to honor the original rental agreement that the city made a number of years ago, just plain and simple. This council can do something about this tonight, stop wasting precious taxpayer dollars, and may, and discuss a reasonable rental increase with the Ranch Mobile Home Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick, Nick Egbal Kidway, I'm a resident of Newberry Park since 1977, and Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Even though time changes, things remain the same, especially in this chamber. Ranch homeowners, I saw the ugliness of this council in 1991, and the thing is, it's great to be involved in one issue that affects you or you care about, but how about- But how about being involved in the city as a whole? How about when it affects your neighbor or another part of the city? Why don't you come out and speak out against that? This body would not be like this if we were all involved and cared about it. I remember my late friend, Mr. Mazri, when he first had his first meeting. He called the people that come in the council for special favors whores and mafiasos. His words. And the people were just stunned and upset. How could an elected person use this kind of language and not know protocol, et cetera? And sure enough, that was the end of it. And so, we've had a new council member, wonderful gentleman, two meetings, calling people very nice gentlemen, not a single vote or anything to make a difference and speak out. Hopefully, in this fall, things will be better, and I will be able to cut this tie. That's why I'm not even wearing a jacket. I mean, 2006, so next year it will be ten years since I bought it. Don't listen to any resident. Don't communicate with any citizen. Don't care about any citizen. No monkeys. What is being done at Ranch, really, Mr. Mayor, I like your smile, is criminal. Should be not only national but international news. Over a dozen people have been killed because of people sitting on these dais. I don't want to speak about it because these people have spoken elegantly. Why do you have a summer hiatus? I mean, Mr. McCoy is not in the assembly that he has to come back from Sacramento. You have not been elected to Congress. This, I've been fighting this battle for twenty years or longer, stuff like that. When the cat is gone, the mice will play. Even though you folks are part-time, make hardly any money compared to the staff, but it does make a difference to have elected officials there. In fifteen seconds, I want to talk about the real issue, which is you like to be involved in bigger issues. Gas prices in this city are $3.70. Lowest is $2.43 at Arco. In the valley, it's $3.19 at Arco, and at Costco, it's $2.99. Across the country, it's $1.99. Why don't you get along, talk to the other people, and take some action about this? Use your office and help the residents of Thousand Oaks and California.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And I do have three written statement cards that will be entered into the record. Mr. Mitnick, do you have any follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two topics essentially to comment on. I heard from three speakers about the use of chemicals at one of the community's parks, the Triumph Canyon Park. As a reminder, that park is run by the, you heard reference to it as well, the Canal Rec and Park District. That board meets on Thursday night. We'll be sure those comments are made available to them. But do rest assured, whatever the Park District Board has approved and what they're doing, they do have to comply with all applicable state and environmental laws on whatever type of chemicals are used. But we will be sure to pass those concerns along as well as to let the Park District staff know about the people who spoke tonight and pass on their contact information. With respect to the Mobile Home Park lawsuit, Ranch Mobile Home Park lawsuit, that is a closed-session item tonight, and the issues articulated will be shared with the city council, and the city attorney will provide an update. As a reminder also to the council and members of the public, the rent adjustment agreements and protections that were put into place that were agreed to after many months, if not years, of discussions and negotiations among the park owners and the tenants, that those have been articulated and shared in these chambers and over, through a variety of different reports to the city council, and that information is available to those who would like to know the background and the history. Again, the city council is prohibited from really getting into that tonight. It's not on the agenda, and the city is defending itself in a lawsuit. That's it, by way of comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitnick. And on to the consent calendar. There is a supplement that I must mention to item F. And the supplemental item says we will be not taking action on the lease agreement between the city and Crown Castle West for wireless facilities on city structures approved by the planning commission. Are there any items to be pulled or questions? If not, we do have one speaker card. Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Egbal-Kidway, as in Newberry Park, speaking for concerned citizens despite the people leaving the chamber because their favorite item is over. This is where the bulk of the tax and waste of the city is on the consent calendar. And as somebody who's been following the city for some time, many of these things used to be on department reports. And now, if you go look at the department reports, it says nothing, nothing. But like the last item, to increase the contribution limit to $510, should really be a department report. And why is it that no one on the council asks the staff to bring back the recission of this un-American sign ordinance? That is a disgrace for everybody sitting over there, especially for Mr. McCoy and Mr. Price, who have had the wrath of dealing with me regarding illegal signs. They should not be illegal. It should be laissez-faire. A wonderful city next door, Westlake Village, allows signs on public right-of-way, which has never been allowed in this city. And so, that's why you go to Costco during November of, in off-year, and you'll see those signs in the medians. And people in Thousand Oaks say, "What's happening over here?" I'm not sure if we need that, but at least I should be allowed to have two McCoy signs on my front yard if I choose to. But you have to keep them hundred feet apart. Who's going to, who's going to measure it? I measured it when Mr. Ferris was running on Wendy Drive, and he said, "No, Nick, it's more than a hundred feet." I mean, do you go in a straight line or you go in the property line? I mean, and the other thing is that some people think there's a teeth to it. There will be fines. There are no fines at all. Just maybe bad publicity. Or you can even pick up the sign afterwards. Want to really talk about the 23 freeway? I mean, you need to talk with Caltrans, even though this project is almost over. Just today, going to LA, there were two accidents. Coming back, I was almost late for the meeting because there was one accident. They are not doing their job. They don't have proper lights there. I was coming back from Orange County at 11:45 PM on a Saturday, driving at about sixty, I think, which is pretty reasonable. Fifty-five is the limit there. All of a sudden, I see lane closed, so I turned near Moor Park Road. I hit a cone at forty-five. I had a rental car. It almost cost me $500 because they are made out of plastic, the cars are. Caltrans is doing a horrible job, and it is the responsibility of the city to make sure that the remaining time is left, that enough notice is given to the people so there are no more accidents and all these traffic delays.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Price, would you care to move the consent calendar?
Yes, I will move the balance of consent calendar.
All right, thank you. And a motion of, oh, yes, with the modification to item F. If, all right, a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
The motion carries five-zero, and the ordinance title for seven P is an ordinance amending sections of the municipal code adjusting campaign contribution limits to reflect changes in the California Consumer Price Index.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And now, we'll move on to eight A, a public hearing for Tefra business. If you'd open that hearing, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item eight A, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing for issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds by Mini Mansions for Shiloh Gardens apartment project located 2825, 2837, 2849, and 2861 Los Robles Road. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. We have one speaker, and the speaker is allowed five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Prescott, you'll be giving us the report?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The public hearing this evening is called a Tefra hearing, as explained in the staff report, for the purposes of the city council considering the authorization for the California Municipal Finance Authority to issue revenue bonds on behalf of Mini Mansions related to the acquisition and rehabilitation of the Shiloh Gardens apartments. Earlier this year, the city council approved the sale of these apartments to the city, I mean, to Mini Mansions, a local nonprofit housing provider. We have a brief project history of Mini Mansions. It was developed by the former redevelopment agency in conjunction with Mini Mansions. With the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the property transferred to the city, and as I noted earlier this year, it was sold to Mini Mansions, or is in escrow to sell, essentially. And the Tefra hearing is required by federal law when a nonprofit, in this case, the California Municipal Finance Authority, wishes to issue bonds. There does need to be a public hearing on the matter before the local government in which the project that would benefit from the bond issue is located, and that happens to be here in Thousand Oaks. CMFA is a joint powers authority to form to assist local governments and nonprofits with the issuance of taxable and non-taxable bonds. The city itself is a member of that authority. The debt that would be issued would be the sole responsibility of Mini Mansions, and the city would have no financial or legal obligations relating to the bonds or responsibility for repayment of the debt. And all financing documents related to the issuance will carry those disclaimers. We are recommending that the city council adopt the attached resolution, attached to your staff report, which would approve the issuance of bonds. And again, this adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of federal law and the California Government Code. I'll be happy to answer questions, and then also, we do have representatives from Mini Mansions and the CMFA here this evening as well.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Any questions for Ms. Prescott? If not, I have a card. Mr. Schrader, did you want to speak? Rick Schrader is here, president of Mini Mansions. Any questions for Rick? None? Then I am going to close the public hearing and ask Mr. Fox if he would be so kind as to make a motion.
Sure. I'm going to move the stack recommendations one and two as it relates to the Tefra funding.
All right, thank you. Motion on the floor. Vote, please.
The motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have an annexation for our lighting assessment district. And I'm going to ask Ms. Lawrence to open that public hearing as well.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item eight B, lighting assessment district number seventy-nine dash two, annexation fiscal year 2016-17, tract fifty-four sixty-five. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no cards for this item.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Taylor, you'll give us the report, please.
Good evening, council, mayor and council members. This public hearing is to provide a forum for any public comments regarding the proposed annexation of seven lots into the city's lighting district. This action was initiated on the July fourteenth council meeting. A single parcel has been subdivided, has tracked fifty-four sixty-five, by developer Gem Street Morningstar LLC, located west of Cal Luthen Campus off of Olson Road. The developer was conditioned to annex to the city's lighting district. The ballot has been completed by the developer and presented to the city clerk for opening and tabulation immediately after this hearing. Staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Let's see. Are there any questions from the council? None. And I don't believe we have any public testimony or speaker cards. And we do have one ballot that has been tabulated. And I've been told by the city clerk that we have received that ballot, so we can close the public hearing now and ask the city clerk to provide the results of the tabulation.
Thank you, Mayor. The ballot cast for the district is yes in the amount of $97.65 and no in the amount of zero. So the ballot is 100% in favor of the assessment and annexation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. So, the ballot is in, the results are known. And perhaps I could ask Mr. McCoy if he would care to make a motion on staff recommendations for eight B.
I move to embrace or accept the recommendations, the staff recommendations, as listed.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And we have a motion on the floor. If you would all vote, please.
The motion carries five-zero.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we have the question of the Boulevard Trolley Service, which has been talked about for quite some time, and now it's finally in front of us. So, Mr. Hauser, you're going to give that report for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With respect to the trolley program, this is addressed as one of the council goals for this fiscal year. Looking back on the history of trolley services, oops, one more slide. The history of the trolley services, this is not the first time that this issue has been brought forth to council, most recently in the past twenty years, in 2001 and 1995. I won't belabor any of the details, other than to say that some of the recommendations that were consistent were the importance of keeping the headways short and also to getting the support of the business community as being key factors in the success of a program. To talk a little bit about the differences between a trolley and shuttle service. Trolleys, as pictured here in the PowerPoint slide, are typical, they emulate the style of the old rail trolleys or horse-drawn trolleys. Trolley services typically service downtown and tourist corridors with frequent stops and what we call narrow headways. In other words, they make frequent trips up and down these corridors. Typically, distances are somewhere between a mile and a half to five miles are typical for these services. For shuttle services, shuttle services are tended to be geared towards specific transit needs. Two specific examples I can give in this county: our own MetroLink shuttle service, which provides a limited stop, express service for commuters to the Moor Park MetroLink station. And then, the Canaan Shuttle Service is another service. It's a shuttle that provides service to the Oak Park area. I would note, though, that that particular service, even though it has the shuttle name, is more typical of what we would term a fixed route local bus service. In terms of vehicles, this city has a long commitment and history towards promotion of vehicles that are alternative-fueled. And so, when we looked at potential vehicles for the trolley program, that was important to us, as well as ADA compliance. Many of the trolley services that are available often cannot accommodate those people with needs for mobility devices. And then, in looking at the proposed path up and down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, staff believes in order to maintain a minimum forty-five-minute headway, that would require two vehicles. Thirty minutes would require three. A previous study had recommended a maximum of five vehicles. The route that staff is, and again, to be clear, this is not a recommendation, but just one possible route would go up and down along Thousand Oaks Boulevard in both directions between the Oaks Mall and the Westlake Promenade. This is a distance of approximately ten miles and would require to do the full loop averaged somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five minutes, depending on traffic conditions. We surveyed a number of agencies in the area that provide what are termed trolley services. Just a brief overview, you'll notice the ridership varies greatly. And I do want to point out, for the benefit of council, for the city Calabasas, that the information that's contained within your packet, this information has changed. We got some updated information from their staff this morning, and we have updated that information for this PowerPoint. Ridership ranges from a high of $9,000 in the city of Ojai per month to a low of $900 in the city of Westlake. Very important to note that for the cities of Ojai and Camarillo, these are essentially, even though they're called trolley services and they operate with a trolley, they are essentially local fixed route services. Contrasted with the city of Westlake Village, which is really kind of, as their own staff have termed it, kind of a social event. It's a service that's only operated Fridays and Saturdays. It's a service that's only operated Fridays and Saturdays, and is, even includes entertainment onboard the vehicle. In terms of hours of operation, various studies have recommended everything from seven-day-a-week service to weekend service to service that only goes until 5:30 PM. Staff looked at all the various services in the area and felt that certainly, starting out, that a three-to-four-day-a-week service with potential hours of 10 to 10 would be appropriate for this service to start out. It's also important to note, too, that under our federal rules and how we're funded, we would be required to provide ADA services as well during the same operating hours. We currently end those services at 8:00 PM, so we would have to extend those, and it has been the city's practice for as long as I've been here, that we operate the senior DAR service at the same times as well. Looking over the operational costs, and this is based upon that four-day model, you can see the expenses there. It's important to note that initially, leasing trolleys is the most cost-effective through the third year, but once you start getting into the fourth year and on, if this is a service that's going to continue, it's really most cost-effective for us to own those trolleys outright. And those are a specialized vehicle that take anywhere from six to 12 months to obtain once the order has been placed. With regards to fares, the services, some fares, some services do charge a fare, others are free. Staff is always concerned about maintaining our fare box ratio, that's one of council's seven goals for transit, and so we would recommend that a fare be collected on this service, although it would be substantially less, a third of what we charge for our regular bus service. Another important key aspect, particularly the trolley services, they're generally heavy on sponsorship, as well as a business support. It has been council's policy up till this time not to permit advertising on any transit vehicles, so that is something that would have to be considered. And also, trolley services typically have a catchy, catchphrase name for them. Hopper is just one example of something that we might use, because it is intended for people to get on and off at their leisure along the Boulevard to shop and recreate. In terms of implementing any type of service, it would take us, if the council's direction was to obtain some used leased vehicles, service could be implemented in as soon as 60 or 90 days. However, if we were to go out and acquire new vehicles, that would require a minimum of eight months to initiate the service. And we're currently, have just started our long-awaited transit master plan with our contractor. That's a process that's going to take the next six to seven months to complete, and we would encourage the council to consider making any type of new service as implementation as part of this overall master plan. At the present time, there is no grant funding specifically for this program, but it would be possible to apply for funding in approximately 18 months to offset some of these operational costs. This would be an acceptable demonstration project service, and would probably be eligible for federal CMAC funding. In the meantime, we would have to use our existing TDA funding, which is sufficient to support the proposal as it stands right now. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Questions for Mr. Hauser? Let's build a opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. My question is, is there a difference in price between leasing a trolley and leasing a shuttle?
I'll use the Canaan Shuttle vehicles as an example, leveraging that through our contractor. I believe the county is paying approximately $1,450 a month for those vehicles. They have a purchase price of approximately $120,000. The leasing companies that I contacted as part of our research, the leasing cost per trolley was between $7 and $7,500 per month. And in the city of Westlake Village and Camrio, I believe they are leasing used trolleys from their operator for $3,500 a month, plus the actual operating cost of the service.
Sounds that a shuttle might be more cost-effective.
In terms of vehicles, absolutely, because these vehicles are highly customized, brass, wood, lots of decorative items, and again, it is an item that, once we purchase it, it's really ours. In fact, I did a nationwide search, and I was unable to find two identical used trolleys anywhere. There's lots of trolleys around, but they're all one-offs, and of course, if we were going to operate the service, we would want to do it in the best possible light and have matching vehicles.
Yeah, the Canaan Shuttle, which I had mentioned in the past as a comparison, has several hundred riders per day. Their cost, yearly cost, is $350,000.
That is, that is correct.
I mean, we are providing the service to Agoura Hills or Oak Park, the city is.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And would it be possible to look at a cost breakdown of having our own MV provider do the service via shuttle rather than a trolley for comparison reasons?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, very good. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the staff report indicated, this isn't the first time, or the second, or really the third, that we've dealt with the concept of a trolley. And for me, because I've been here for all of them, it's really been three things that have been a concern that I'd like to get somewhat addressed tonight. Number one is, is the need for a trolley along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I realize that people could have different perspectives on that, but I think council has to rightly ask the question, is this going to significantly change our transportation system as it relates to movement along Thousand Oaks Boulevard? So, need's always been a question. Number two is a cost, and if you read the staff report, it talks about potential general fund subsidies, of which I've never been in favor of, and that hasn't changed tonight. And I'm just saying on the record, I'm not going to support any general fund money for this unless and until it's proven that it is a widely-used system by our residents in our community. So, cost is a concern. And then finally, rider interest. You know, how many people are actually interested in taking a trolley from the mall to the promenade, to the lakes, to the various places? So, I think we have an opportunity, at least at this juncture, to try to get some answers to some of these things. Mr. Spurgeon, let's start with cost first, because I think need, it's everybody's speculation. So, I'm interested in this, if at all, I'm interested in this as more as a test kind of opportunity to see if a trolley system, you know, may work. So, my first question is, are there, my understanding is, the use of certain transit dollars has been redefined by the state of California and/or the federal government with what we can use transit dollars for. We used to be able to use it for roads and, you know, kind of what everybody would expect you'd use transit dollars for. My understanding now is we're more restricted, and those dollars, believe it or not, can't be used for road improvements. Maybe just elaborate on that a little bit.
That's correct, Councilmember Fox. Our Transportation Development Act funding, which has for many years prior...
That's federal money, by the way?
That is state money.
State money, okay.
Is actually a portion of sales tax revenue that the state gets, and then they pass it back down to local agencies. So, that funding, TDA funding, has paid for our transit program for years, as well as funded a significant portion of our road maintenance over the years. A couple of years ago, the state enacted legislation that, as you point out, restricted that TDA funding solely for transit purposes only.
And how many, what kind of dollars are we talking about here?
In the past, our TDA funds that we've been able to use for streets has been, has varied between $2 and $3 million a year, and our total, Mike...
For this upcoming fiscal year will be about 4.7 million.
So, our total TDA revenues that are now all going to transit is that level now.
Now, when you say transit, that's moving folks, basically. It's something with wheels, or rails, or something along those lines, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, I might, it may be in the report here, but I guess, is it possible that if we were to move forward on a concept of a trolley on a trial basis, that transit funds could be used, and would staff support that?
A new service such as this, for the first three years, can be considered a demonstration project. What that means is, is that the fare box is not required to be met, and you can use 100% of your transit funding, TDA in this case, to fund it. So, for three years, you would not need to subsidize or make up the difference of any fare box, lack, lack of fare box, which is, would be 20%, in this case, similar to our fixed routes. So, to the extent that we may or may not have either currently or in the near future excess TDA funds, you know, depending on the program, whether, you know, the amount of, the amount of annual cost, which varies considerably here, depending on the option we might pursue, we, do we have, currently have enough TDA funds? I think the answer, to be honest, is yes, but we also have to consider our long-term needs of bus replacements and other, other needs that may come up in the near term.
Okay. I guess that's all the questions I have, you know, I'll reserve the rest of my comments and discussion for council discussion, but I do want, you know, just to prepare staff at least for the direction I'd like to take us in, and that is more of a study. By no means am I interested in buying anything. And basically, what I want to, if we're going to do this, I have no idea where council is on this, I want to be able to try it in a manner and a fashion that doesn't use any general fund dollars, gives it a fair hearing, so to speak, in terms of, I think council and the public needs to know at the end of a year whether there's an interest in trolleys. So, you know, from a business standpoint, I say make it free. Let them get on the trolley, and that way, there's no question on whether the fares are too high. If we have the transit funds, let them ride the trolley for free, let's see if, you know, we have 100 people a day or 1,000 people a day. The fact of the matter is, it's total speculation. I think everybody has a different perspective. I know I certainly share one, having been here a long time, but I don't know, and we're not going to know until we at least experiment with that. So, at least for me, I'd like staff to, because I don't know, it's really laid out here in the report, I don't want to catch you guys flat-footed, is that I'd like to see us go in a direction that allows us to extricate ourselves relatively easily at the end of a year, if we determine that the ridership and the interest just isn't there, even if it's free. And I recognize, we are using transit funds, so I would expect staff to balance that with our real needs, and I, when I say real, it's not trying to be disrespectful to a trolley, but our real needs, which are our transit systems that are in place, that are serving residents citywide, and our ongoing municipal services that we have no choice to support. You kind of get the sense of what I'm looking at? Okay, and then I'll, when it's council discussion, I'll lay out kind of what I'm thinking. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Price?
Yes, Mr. Spurgeon, I can't recall whether or not this was a question, and maybe we'll have to rely on Mr. Powers for this, but whether or not this was a question that was asked in the Community Attitude Survey that was conducted earlier this year.
I don't believe that was a question asked this year in the survey.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hauser, Ms. Bildeloppenya brought up shuttle versus trolley, but can you elaborate a little bit more on, you know, what a shuttle would look like versus a trolley going up and down the Boulevard?
Yeah, certainly, I can do that. The shuttles that, for instance, that are on the Canaan Shuttle are what are known as a cutaway van, which is a chassis that's placed on a van body, typically seats somewhere between 14 and 24 passengers. In the case of the Canaan Shuttle, that's a 20-passenger van, very similar of the larger scale to our own smaller dial-a-ride vans. And in the case of the Canaan Shuttle, those are CNG-powered, as are all of our vans that are similar to that.
I see. And do we have shuttle capability right now, if we wanted to institute it on the Boulevard?
If council's direction was that you wanted to implement a service as quickly as possible, I believe that our existing resources could do that on a temporary basis until we could secure additional vehicles. And I would note that under our contract with MV, we've already prescribed a methodology for us to add vehicles.
Do you think the shuttle would accomplish the same thing that the trolley would?
I think that there's a certain nostalgia to riding a trolley, there's a certain ambiance, certainly for the city of Westlake Village, that's a key characteristic of their trolley service. It's difficult to gauge, particularly, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is one of the most densely-transited boulevards in the county. We have no less than six bus lines that travel that, either the full length of our proposed route, or portions of it. So, it's very difficult to gauge. Certainly, if we look to it providing service later in the evening, that's certainly a benefit, since we stopped service currently at 8:00 PM.
Mm-hmm. And the shuttle will be ultimately cheaper?
It's ultimately cheaper to purchase, however, it's not ultimately cheaper to operate. It still requires the same cost for the operator, still requires the same type of fuel, be it a little bit fuel-efficient, still requires the same level of maintenance, advertising, and support.
I see. So, a one-year or two-year trial period for shuttle versus trolley is going to cost us about the same?
The operational cost will be the same, the difference will be in the lease cost of the vehicles and/or, excuse me, if we decide to purchase outright, there would be a significant difference.
Well, putting aside purchasing, because I don't want to buy anything right now, until we see if this works, what would be the difference in the lease cost between a shuttle and a trolley?
Based on our current contract with MV, we could lease the vehicles for approximately $1,500 each, versus approximately $7,000 for a trolley per month.
Hmm, so it's pretty significant, huh? Yeah. All right, very good. Yes, Ms. Bildeloppenya?
The concept originally, at least in my mind, was to connect Westlake to the Oaks Mall, Westlake High School in particular, because Agoura High School is now connected up and down, students can travel up and down Canaan Road. Do our current fixed route buses pick up students from Westlake High School and take them to the mall, or to the Jans Mall, or anywhere in that area?
Yes, actually, we have two routes that currently do that.
And how often do they travel?
It's approximately, for each one, they're traveling in opposite directions, they're approximately 75-minute headways, so because of both directions, you cut that in half, approximately 35 to 40 minutes.
Okay, and do they, where do they board the bus?
We have two locations. One would be at Lakeview Canyon Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the other one would be Westlake Boulevard at Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
And it will take them about 30 minutes to get to the Oaks Mall, you say?
On one direction, because it's traveling towards the mall, the other one will take a little bit longer, because it's going down into portions of Westlake Village and then returning, so it'd be slightly longer than that.
Oh, so it's not a direct route?
Not a direct route, that's correct.
Okay, and do we know how many students ride that, the bus?
I don't have any data on that. I could extrapolate from the number of student, or ticket sales, we could possibly do that, but the ridership for those routes are relatively low during the school hours, and those riders that we have surveyed, almost always exclusively people going to and from work.
Mm-hmm. And is the, are the fixed routes from Westlake High School to the Oaks Mall, are they advertised within the school district, so that students are aware of it?
I'm in contact with their transportation coordinator on an annual basis. I know they are aware, we do provide brochures to what extent the school advertises the service. I will tell you that one of our key characteristics of all the services we offer, in fact, our primary in terms of how we determine route structure, is we base those around school bell schedules. That's our number one.
Okay, I know we have the master plan coming up, and staff recommendation is to perhaps include some service such as this one as part of the overall transit master plan, and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to it, but certainly, it would have been helpful to have a question in the city attitude survey, as Mr., as Mayor Partem Price mentioned. The next attitude survey is two years from now, so in 2018 or 2017? 17. Mm-hmm. I mean, and here we are, we're talking about mixed use on the Boulevard, we're talking apartments, we're talking hotels, and I do see a need for a more direct service on Teal Boulevard. I do see that in the future. Whether that is done via a shuttle or a trolley, still remains to be seen, but I would not be opposed to trying it out for a year and see where it takes us. And certainly, whatever the motion will be, is to include this in the master plan, Mr. Fox, since you already motioned... Mr. Fox, since you already motioned or intend to make the motion.
Very good, here's one for you. Shuttle versus trolley, if you can, compute for me quickly, well, you don't have to quickly, but, one-year cost on a shuttle, one-year cost on a trolley?
One year?
Maintenance, everything.
Okay.
Leasing, maintenance.
Okay.
Ballpark.
Okay. Making the assumption that we're going to run one vehicle and have one vehicle as a reserve in case something happens.
Right, we'd have to have two to make this work.
To make that happen. Based upon the trolley proposal, that's approximately $360,000 on a leased basis. That trolley cost assumes close to $100,000 in expense versus approximately $20,000 in expense for the comparable shuttle vehicle, so subtracting 80,000 from that, I believe that would be about $250,000.
Okay.
No, that would be the total cost to operate the service for one year.
For the shuttle?
With two shuttles.
Two shuttles, 250, two trolleys, 360.
Approximately.
Okay. And will the shuttle qualify for the TDA money as well as the trolley?
Yes, it will.
All right. Any other questions? I do have a speaker card on this item, Mr. Nick Kidway.
Sorry to intrude in your discussion with a speaker card. Nick Kidway, director of consent, citizens' office, what happened to my newbie council member, he's not talking about this? This is such a taxpayer boondoggle, it's, every conservative should just rise up against it. I just spoke in favor of our neighboring city of Westlake already, before. $13.67 per rider subsidy going on since 2013, so no end in sight. 900 riders. Free money, that's what it is all about, Mr. McCoy. There's a chance to get a grant, state TDA money. See the bureaucrats huddle, how can we fleece the taxpayers more? It's the truth. This is Linda Park's dream come true. And I'm in the minority maybe, because almost all the neighboring cities have it, so why does Thousand Oaks not have it? Yeah, so, the kiss of death is already spelled out, will stop every three blocks. Who has the most val, even though it is subsidized, et cetera, who has the time? That's why Greyhound is going out of business, Amtrak, nobody, I, you know, a lot of times, I mean, I'm going in different areas, I would like to not drive, but it takes, to go to San Diego, five hours on Amtrak, or four hours, something like that. It was, even the fast ones are not fast enough. Has the council ever heard of Uber or Lyft? Of course not Sidecar, Sidecar is still not available, but Uber has been in Thousand Oaks for two years, Lyft for about a year. Do you know, to go from the Oaks Mall to the blob, Civic Arts Plaza, it's between $5 and $6. And you can have four people in your, in the Toyota Camry that the Uber driver will, so, I, I mean, the private sector has already taken care of it without subsidies, they are raping the drivers, obviously, because, but it's a rider's world right now. And then, the goal-setting session woke us up to a $4 million permanent hole in the city's maintenance budget. Has that been taken care of, or we are going to willing to spend another million dollars for this boondoggle to satisfy a supervisor? I don't know. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I believe Mr. Mitnick has some clarifications on the cost amounts, do you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for clarity, simple terms, if you go the shuttle, or if you go down the trolley path, it's a $370,000 cost. The staff report made reference to that as well as a $400,000 cost, for clarity, if you do the trolley or the shuttle with the hours recommended, that would be an increase in two hours a day to 10:00 PM. By federal law, we have to then expand or extend the dial-ride service, and that would have a $30,000 price tag. For, if you go down the path of a shuttle, the total cost of that would be 290, 290,000, and I think we'd have the same impact on dial-ride of 30,000 on top of that. So I hope that provides some clarity as to the cost. Essentially, $80,000.
Give the council the cumulative numbers for each.
It'd be $80,000 less expensive to do the shuttle.
All right.
That's it, per year.
Per year. All right, is that clear, Mr. Fox? Did I clear that up for you? Okay. All right, well, why don't we discuss this a little further? Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Let me start the discussion, the, and I'm not making a motion, because I still have, as I said, every time this has come up, I can't get past the cost issue and really the need for it. And Ms. Bill de Peña does bring up a good point, although I think it's the cart before the horse, is, and that is, if, and that's a big if, we are able to move forward with some mixed-use projects, which is proving to be very difficult, simply because of the private sector actually moving forward on mixed use, having nothing to do with the city, or Mejuri, or any of the other things you may have read out in the paper, the fact of the matter is, no one's come in and to make an application, but that being said, I think a trolley may make some sense if there was, you know, one or two mixed-use projects on the boulevard, but I really believe that's the cart before the horse. In listening to the costs, for me, I can't in good conscience spend $360, $370 transit or general fund or otherwise on an experiment. I just, I think it is, candidly, respectfully, I think it's irresponsible, we really don't know. I know other cities have done it, there's a reason Thousand Oaks hasn't done it, and there's also a reason Thousand Oaks, year after year, gets awards from the state in our fiscal management. This has been talked about a number of times, and we just keep it back to, it's a very expensive experiment, of which at least anecdotally, many of us know is going to have very low ridership. In fact, it's not anecdotal, when you look at the cost per rider in some of the other cities, extremely high. So, I think it's something that we can look at as far as our transit master plan, I think it's something that maybe can be brought back to the council, maybe down the road, but I, like I said, I can't, even with using transit funds, I just can't get past, and let me just comment on the shuttle. I think the shuttle's a total waste of time and money, that's why we have buses. The whole allure of the trolley is it's a cool thing to ride. You know, if somebody's going to take a shuttle, they're going to take the bus. So I think that's, even though it's saving us, looks like $80,000, from my sense, that's really money not well spent, it's a shuttle service, and Mr. Kidway brings up a good point, which isn't in this report, and that's the private sector ability to use these transportation. Uber and some of these others are extremely, I was just reading the paper, it's a $2 billion company now. So, that's what people are using, that's what the kids are using. So, and the other thing is, I got two kids that just, one graduated Westlake High School, he goes as a senior there, I have to tell you, as soon as those kids get a driver's license, they're asking mom and dad for a car. They are not interested in riding a bus or a trolley, that is not cool. And so I just don't think we're going to get a lot of students from Westlake High School jumping on anything, bullet train or otherwise, so. Those are my concerns, and so I'm not going to make a motion to deny it, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Price?
Thank you. Yeah, I think my comments are along the same lines, I don't see a demonstrated need yet, I, you know, hopefully we will get there at some point, but spending that kind of money on an experiment for a year's period of time is not, you know, in my view, a good expenditure of public funds. I would like to see that question asked in future community attitude surveys. You know, I think the Canaan Shuttle is a little bit different in that there's a lot of people that live right off of Canaan Road, and a lot of students take that to get to and from school. That's not going to happen here in Thousand Oaks, up and down the boulevard. I also don't see that when the school bell rings at 2:50 or whenever it rings down there at Westlake, that students are going to come out and want to get to the mall. Those students there are a little more committed to their studies, and I think a lot of them are either staying on campus, some of them going to the library, some of them going to other locations where they continue to, you know, they do their homework and other things, sports. As Mr. Fox says, those who want to go to the mall are going to jump in their car and they're going to drive down there. So yeah, I don't see how I would be able to support either one of the options, either a trolley or a shuttle at this point, although I do believe, and I hope that we do get to the point where one becomes reasonable. The other thing too, with six different bus lines going up and down the boulevard, there are ample ways for one who has the desire to get on one of those buses and take it to the mall, if that's where they wish to go, so, those are just my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. McCoy?
I appreciate what council member Bill de La Peña said in regards to the mixed use down the road. Growing up in Coronado, having a trolley there, there was a historical significance, as they would give you an education going up and down the main avenue. I don't know that we're there yet, and Mr. Kidway's comment about me not speaking, I have two ears and one mouth, so I do twice as much listening, I wouldn't be in favor at this time, so, but in the future, it would be something I'd be interested in seeing when we get to that place of mixed use on the boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. May I just ask another quick question, Mr. Hauser? You know, this idea of transporting students and from high schools to the mall, is there a way we could enhance somehow our existing service to accommodate that, or, you know, the potential demand?
Yeah, it's certainly something that we can look at as part of the master plan, however, one thing I would have to caution is, because much of our funding comes from the federal government, it does come with restrictions, and one of the things we're specifically prohibited from doing is providing school-specific services, so we need to always make sure that whatever service we're planning while it can help get students to and from, it can't be targeted specifically to students. The Canaan Shuttle is heavily used by students, but it's not paid for with federal dollars.
So we could do it, but it would have to be open to everyone? Okay, all right, very good. Ms. Bill de Peña, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. It may be the case that it is premature to have a trolley, although I don't think we will ever find out whether it will be used until and unless we actually implement it. And certainly, I would be very much in favor of asking the questions in the community attitude survey, that is very important, in 2017, it would give us an idea as to whether it would be used. And regarding the boulevard specific or plan and mixed use, that is also evolving, so I'm not sure whether we can include the concept of a trolley or some sort of shuttle service up and down the boulevard in the master transit plan for 2016, is that something that can be included?
We can certainly examine the specifics of that service as part of the overall research.
Now, the plan will be presented in 2016, and can it be amended when we have information regarding feedback from the community?
That is correct.
Okay, then I would motion to reserve the trolley service for examination for the 2016 transit master plan, and also request that we ask the question in our community attitude survey for 2017. That would be my motion.
All right. Would you want to expand on that, as far as looking at the shuttle and enhancing the existing bus service as well, as also?
I can certainly, I can certainly include it in motion to examine the existing fixed bus routes, and as I mentioned and asked earlier, do the students even know, do others even know that there is bus service available up and down the boulevard?
The transit master plan will, just by its very scope, will be looking at all of our services, including the fixed routes on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and looking at opportunities for enhancing those, whether it's for students or business use or whatever. In fact, there'll be some outreach to the business, businesses along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and we will include a discussion with them about a possible trolley or shuttle service as well.
That sounds good to me, that would be included in my motion then.
All right, you include that in your motion. All right, gentlemen, any comments to the motion? No? All right. I think it's worthwhile to take a look at, I really do, and I think the potential for mixed use on the boulevard may, you know, enhance the need for this kind of thing, it's probably a little bit ahead of its time, but I don't see any problem in looking into it for the future, so. With that, Mr. Fox, comment?
Just a thought, is, I think, is, as we move forward on the specific plan of the boulevard, staff needs to keep in mind the ongoing costs for this, and maybe we can start to explore building in some of those costs recovery with the development process. You know, I know, you know, they have Quimby fees, they offer the parks and that type of things, so, if there's going to be an ongoing need as we move forward for this, that we need to look at, at least exploring, I'm sure we're going to get a lot of pushback from the folks that are building these things, but we need to take a look at that, because that has a direct impact on their project, as a benefit.
And as a matter of fact, the city of Camarillo has businesses which contribute to their trolley service.
Let's add that to the motion, huh?
So, that would be a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be accepted as a friendly amendment.
Good.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, down the road, I can't say when, but we're going to need connectivity on the boulevard, connectivity between perhaps residential and some of the existing retail uses that we have now, and so it's a good thing to look at this. I mean, we want to cut car trips, we want to cut emissions, we want to get people, you know, out of their cars, and so whether we enhance the existing system, or we go with a shuttle or a trolley, I think it's definitely worthwhile to take a look at in the master plan. So, shall we vote on that, please? Thank you for that motion, Ms. Bill de Peña.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved, we'll look forward to that in the spring of '16. Now, Mr. McCoy, I understand you have a nomination for planning commission.
A lot of great applicants, just I marvel at the willingness of our community to volunteer, and the appointment that I've chosen is Mr. Jeff Alexander, small business owner on the boulevard, been a resident of Thousand Oaks since the early 70s. During the election, I heard from a number of folks, and a large constituency of voters is 50 and older, and so, as I had the privilege to meet Mr. Alexander and see his heart for the city and the wisdom that he has, he's pragmatic, he's a team player, but he's got some great ideas, and so I'm putting him forward as planning commissioner, that was my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I do have a speaker card on this issue, Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, I don't know if anybody, and an applicant, I should say that, I guess, 19 people applied, not speaking because I was an applicant, but in general, many issues that I am concerned about, I don't know if, in the past, I've applied many times and one of the, and never been appointed, but one of the nice things about applying for these things is a one-on-one with the council member, and generally, we don't really get a chance to talk, and I've had some very good conversations over the course of 20 years with council members during the interview process, sometimes, or most of the time, there is a staff member, sometimes they'll even leave, and let us talk. The thing that I completely abhor is that one of the rules is that if you cannot make it to the appointment, you are automatically out, and that is completely ridiculous. it to the appointment, you are automatically out, and that is completely ridiculous for a volunteer position. If you are, if you have a job, like right now, I'm working in the valley, and you cannot come at the 3:15 when you are given that slot, then you are automatically not eligible for it. I don't know if the council member had interviews, I understand this is a political appointment, and a lot of times, in fact, almost all the time, I've gone for the interview knowing that I would not be appointed, but I still put my name in as being involved. One of the things that came to my mind, especially after learning that my old friend, Dave Galbranson, also applied, who owns multiple properties on the Boulevard, how can Mr. Galbranson, if he was appointed, or Mr. Alexander, be allowed to speak or vote on the Boulevard? This is his complete source of income, and there's probably a possibility that he could end up owning that business, and so how can he not be asked to recuse himself when the Boulevard comes? So to appoint somebody based on their views and et cetera, when the law does not allow them to participate, doesn't make any sense to me, but you know, I'm just a common concerned citizen of Thousand Oaks. Good job. I hope Mr. Alexander does well. He was a frequent visitor to this podium. I had, people don't understand me, I had a hard time understanding him a lot of times. I think he supported the council majority in the past, but that's water under the bridge. Wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, we, Mr. Price?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Kidway, for bringing that up, but I know I've enjoyed a couple of those conversations with you at various interviews, and my door's always open to you if you wanna come by or give me a call. I think actually you found my home phone number, too, and gave me a call one Saturday, so thank you for that. But what I'd like to say is, I certainly am going to go along with the recommendation here, and I wanna thank Mr. Alexander for his willingness to serve, but I do wanna make a couple of comments regarding the Planning Commission, the importance of their role, and because developers are entitled to due process, and it's the job of the Planning Commission to review and evaluate each project and determine whether or not it complies with the law, zoning laws and codes. And while not mandatory, I would encourage any and all of our Planning Commissioners to attend the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy. I know that as a Planning Commissioner myself, at one point, I got a lot out of that, and it certainly gives you a much better sense of what your responsibilities and duties are. So with that, I'm gonna let, is Mr. McCoy going to make a motion, or?
I believe he, he already has.
Okay.
And we're having comments to the motion, and?
Yeah, I can't let this one go by without making a comment.
Okay.
I am certainly gonna support the motion. It's no secret to the council and many in the community, Mr. Alexander has been a long time friend of mine, going back to before I was ever elected to the council. He used to own a business on T.O. Boulevard, T.O. Corral, and I can remember going and helping him deliver bales of hay. Fact of the matter is, I've said many times, most of the information I've learned about running small business, I called Mr. Alexander and asked for his advice, 'cause I respect him tremendously with his knowledge of the small businesses on the Boulevard. As far as a political pointees, I also wanted full disclosure here, as I mentioned, Jeff has been a friend and a supporter for many years, and he has asked on a number of occasions for appointment to the Planning Commission, if, and indicated an interest. I never thought Jeff would like it. I, and there's no question he'll do a good job, but in my heart of hearts, I never thought he'd like it, and he knows, you know, we had those conversations, so now it's gonna be, I'll see who was right, 'cause he's gonna be here on Monday night, and I know that he will bring a sense of independence, he cares deeply about this community, has lived here a long time, he does have a perspective on the Boulevard, but I also know, he's a guy that plays by the rules all the time. So I have no doubt he will perform his duties as a Planning Commissioner with the utmost integrity and character, there's no question about it, and we're getting a good one on the Planning Commission. I think Mr. McCoy's appointment was outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Price. I also would encourage Jeff Alexander to participate and to learn as much as possible. I didn't make it clear, I'd like to recommend Jeff Alexander to the Planning Commission.
Yes, thank you. Very good, and I just would say that to Mr. Alexander and to any Planning Commissioner, be prepared and keep an open mind. So let's vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you, and I do believe we have a traffic commissioner nominee as well. Mr. McCoy?
Tom Gregory. He's already served on the Traffic Commission before. He's well-liked and appreciated, he's wise, insightful, so I'd like to make a motion to have Tom Gregory as my traffic commissioner.
Very good. Comments to the motion? All right, vote, please.
I do believe we have a speaker card.
Oh, I beg your pardon, we do. Sorry, Mr. Kidway?
For our traffic?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence?
You know, I can hardly hear in this chamber, I need to get my speaker here and listen on the iPad. Nick Kidway has entered Newbury Park. Could it be all right to say that I, even though I applied for it, and I've gone to the meetings, I know about the history, that this commission should really be abolished? I think I've said it before, there's no need for it anymore. What's the history? For Mr. McCoy's sake, basically, it was established about 20 years ago to deflect hot potato items on traffic, especially humps in neighborhoods that the city did not want, on five people that were not elected, to say no. And we had long meetings, people wanting humps because we had on the neighborhoods, and that was basically one of the main reasons. That reason has gone away, and the commission does not really meet that often, it's less of a rubber stamp than even, more of a rubber stamp than the city council is, issues which people have written in the paper about abolishing the left turn lanes, not having to spend three minutes at traffic lights, I've gone there, they cannot put, do not put anything on the agenda, except what the staff puts. So it's basically a rubber stamp and a waste of taxpayer funds, because it costs a lot of money to operate it. I would like to just add that as an applicant, I had and have the unique background of having driven between two and a half to three million miles in Southern California or California or the West Coast, oh, in the last 40 years, because I've been a street person all my life, even as a student, that's how I got introduced, in Orange County, and so I brought, would have brought a unique perspective to the commission, but I have to say that this appointment system of the commissioners has turned into a political football, because the commissioner was removed for whatever reason, and appointed, a young lady was appointed, who has ambitions to be a council member. And one of the things about the commission, the reason people want to be on this commission is because of the title. Commissioner, sounds so wonderful. "I'm a traffic commissioner." Oh, okay. You find people, or what? Otherwise, on other commission, and it's televised, too, even though it's not a big thing, but it still is, and the same commissioner that was removed is, has come back, and he made a big contribution and was involved in the McCoy campaign. So I don't know if there's a connection, but that's, I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, we have a motion, Mr. Price?
I feel compelled to say just a few things. First of all, I think that the existence of the Traffic Commission is mandated by law, so abolishing it is not a possibility. Second, I had the privileges serving with Tom Gregory on the Traffic Commission back in '07 through '0, about '10, I think, 2010, and he does provide a lot of valuable insight. I also believe that this Traffic Commission, as it currently exists or will exist momentarily, I think you'll see some new ideas, I think you will probably see some things that are brought forward by some of the newer Planning Commissioners, that not only I, but Councilmember Bill de La Peña appointed. So, Traffic Commissioner, excuse me, thank you. So with that, I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. McCoy?
For the record, Mr. Gregory did not participate in my campaign, Mr. Kidway, and secondly, neither did Mr. Alexander, so I just want that for the record.
Very good, very good. Traffic Commission, vital, after all, on all the surveys, traffic comes up as the number one concern across the country, we're facing huge traffic problems, our commissioners have some novel ideas, my appointee, our commissioner, is advocating for blinking yellow arrows at left turn stalls, see if that might alleviate the problems a little bit, but they're coming up with some good ideas. So let's vote on that. Tom Gregory for Traffic Commission.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Mitnick, follow-up for this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up from items discussed tonight. The next city council meeting will be on, two weeks from now, on September 15th. At this point in time, we have one public hearing scheduled, that's the annual consolidated annual performance and evaluation report with respect to our CDBG money that comes to us from Washington. Department reports, we're looking at at least two items right now, there's a proposed hotel at the corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard in Westlake, or near Westlake High School, I should say, and that requires a general plan amendment initiation, and that'll be coming to the city council. Also, our public works director will provide a water conservation update, and I can give a little teaser, the August data for the city water system, that's central Thousand Oaks, for August, that just came in, and we, Mr. Spurgeon, I think we're at 31%, and our target was something like 26%, so our residents in the central part of Thousand Oaks are stepping up, and on the 15th, you'll learn about our two private water companies, Cal-Am and Cal-Water, how they're doing. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. And Ms. Noonan, we have some conferences for closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have four closed-session matters. The first two are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98. First one is Montana versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56201100408151, and the second one is City of Thousand Oaks versus Parking Network, case number 56201200415100. And the second two closed-session matters are anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B3C. Both of those pertain to claims by Argo Chemical, claim numbers 1289 and 1290-2015. It's unlikely I'll have anything to report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Noonan. This evening, we have two members of the community that have passed away that we would like to adjourn in their memory. The first is Jerry Wing. Jerry was actually an employee of the City of Thousand Oaks, he passed away August 1st after a courageous battle with cancer. Jerry was a member of the city family, having worked for the library as the building maintenance technician for 17 years. He worked at both the Thousand Oaks and Newbury Park branch, and he was the go-to person taking care of any building emergency issues. Jerry's professionalism was instrumental in maintaining the library as a premier destination for both residents and visitors. Jerry was an avid golfer, he helped organize the city's annual golf tournament. He was also one of the city's superheroes when he actually saved a man's life in a Las Vegas casino, performing CPR. Jerry grew up as an Air Force child, he lived throughout the United States, he served in the U.S. Navy for 20 years at Point Magoo, he received numerous citations and medals while serving his country. He loved riding his Harley, and he was a participant in the Ventura County Love Ride for veterans. Jerry was a terrific storyteller with a quick wit, he had a wonderful sense of humor, he survived by his wife of over 37 years, Carrie Wing, and their two children, Christopher and Ryan. Jerry, you will be sorely missed by both your immediate family, your city family, and your many friends. Secondly, we would like to adjourn this evening in memory of Mel Silverberg. Mel passed away on August 20th. Mel was born in New York City, graduated from City College in New York in chemical engineering, and was married to his high school sweetheart, Norma, for 62 years. He was an amazing advocate for seniors in Thousand Oaks, worked with many agencies related to the planning for the anticipated growth in the senior population, he served on the council of aging for 10 years, and he was instrumental in the development of the city's senior adult master plan. Mel served as the city's delegate to the Ventura County Area Agency on Housing for 12 years, and in 2012, I was actually very proud to present Mel with the Thousand Oaks Senior of the Year Award, a very prestigious award, Mel deserved it greatly. He served as a local representative for the Bene Brith, and he was helping develop senior housing in Thousand Oaks, and he was a founding member of his temple's auxiliary group to serve the social needs of its adult members. Mel battled cancer for the past two years, he was a brave man, he enlisted in many clinical trials in hope that his participation would help others, and I'll tell you, Mel would not give up, he continued fighting, and he participated in all his activities well into June, right up until he passed. He was really a great guy, a great advocate for seniors, his favorite quote was from Margaret Mead, and it said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world, indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." He's the loving husband of Norma, he's the father of Robin and Cheryl, grandfather of Melissa, Justin, and Kara, he was a committed family man, an exceptional engineer, tireless community organizer, a talented pancake chef, and an avid San Francisco Giants fan, and we, all of us at this diocese, and members of the city staff, and his family and friends will miss him, and he was a great citizen of the City of Thousand Oaks. So ladies and gentlemen, that will conclude our meeting for this evening, and thank you for joining us, and we will see you all in two weeks.